Reduced pay plan changes was thirty thousand and all other changes netted to about twelve thousand. On the operating side, the city clerk had a ten thousand dollar increase in her estimate for the general election expense. She was comparing it to some items she, the last time they had a large general election, and she's carried that forward to say that it would probably cost a little bit more this time around. Urban design, they've delayed their comp planning, so that saved sixty-five thousand of operating expense. And then various other operating expenses went down twenty thousand. We already talked about the capital outlay, and on the transfer size, we just talked about those items.
So if you're comfortable with all of these changes, these affect zero service level changes. No, service levels stay the same. If you're comfortable with these changes, since we presented the long-range financial plan in February, we would like an affirmative vote on at least these changes as we put the budget together.
Can we get a bottom line of how this reflects on what was originally outlined, and then also what this means in terms of the millage rate potential for next year?
So, keeping the millage rate the same, with the estimated increase of a six percent, would not, none of these changes would affect the millage rate. So, we still have to use two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars of reserves, and I can go back to that slide.
Okay.
So, the four-seventeen-nineteen column includes these changes.
Okay.
So that's where we're at.
Okay.
So, we would, if we do nothing else, which, well, we are going to do something else, but let's say we do nothing else, we would budget two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand eight oh five in reserves. Budget those dollars to balance the budget. That doesn't mean we use them. We just budget it. That's where we would stand if you approve all of those initial changes.
Well, do we want to continue this discussion so we can see what the overall impact, or do you want to?
If you'd like, if you'd like, but that's up to you.
Um...
We would go, we're gonna go line item by line item on the next set.
On the next, on the next one?
Yes.
Um, comments on this particular page that Howard is?
I'm fine with this page.
Oh, I can...
There we go.
Debbie? Gary? Lynn?
On this particular page regarding personnel expenditures, I have no issues.
Yeah. I didn't have any either. On this particular one?
Just, just this set?
Just that set.
Yep.
Is there, do you want to vote on that, or does?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I would.
I'll make a motion to approve this page only.
Okay, can you put that page back up?
Yes. So I have it up here on an Excel document. Let me see if I can make it...
All you have to do is page up?
Page up to where you had it.
Just page up. It's right here. It's under Personnel Expenditures, L R F P.
Yep.
And it's just that from row, it's row thirty-seven to forty-three. No, you went past it.
No, it goes all the way down to, this whole page will go down to line item ninety-eight.
Well, what he had, what you showed on the PowerPoint, Howard was asking us, are you asking for the whole page?
Actually, yes.
The whole?
Well, I can...
The PowerPoint was just a summary, but it was all those items, and all those items are here. So if I go back to the PowerPoint...
Okay. So that would include, if we have, if you go to this page, it's the page under General Fund, and it includes, it's not just...
So it's, um...
Yeah, it's all of the, all of these.
I have issues with anything that has to do with the drainage program.
Okay, so let's just do personnel first.
Okay. So under Personnel, we talked about the unemployment compensation, the police pension, fire pension, union contract, other pay plan changes.
Does anybody else have any issues with anything on that page?
No.
Not so far.
Maybe we can make this quicker.
Okay.
I have, do you?
We'll do each, we can do each one of these slides, which are the same things.
Well, Howard was saying on this particular page, that you said, if we had, excuse me, the first page that you went through, all of these?
Yes.
Where it had to do with the roads, the drainage and all of that, did anybody have any issues which got you to the two-twenty-six eight oh five? Does anybody have any issues with anything on that page? And Gary is saying he has something to do with the drainage.
I'm saying that the issues regarding the drainage program are something that are, I can't get past right now.
So, we are gonna bring up the drainage program on a future slide as well. This particular, what we're already showing here is just to bring it down from five-hundred to three-fifty, but we do bring it up as a service level alternative reduction.
We are gonna bring it up later.
So, the, so the three-fifty is gonna be coming up later?
Yes.
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 So, I'm already agreeing to a one-fifty reduction, and I get a chance to express my feelings about the remaining three-fifty.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I can go forward at this time.
Okay. So then what I'm hearing is, on all of the items, Personnel, Operating, Spent, all of this, that gets us to?
Use of reserves of two-twenty-six eight oh five.
I'm hearing that a consensus, do you want to make a motion to approve that page?
Yeah, that's the motion. I am making my motion to that, but you just said...
It's okay.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve this page. A favor, please send your thought by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go line item by line item.
Oops. Sorry about that. Clicked the wrong one. Okay. So, then we also just given you a comparison from fiscal year nineteen original budget to what you all have just approved for fiscal year two thousand twenty. So Personnel, from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year two thousand twenty, will go approximately three and a half percent. Operating, from four-five-eight-two to four-seven-eighty, will be approximately four-point-three percent. So total operations overall, three-point-three percent. Then I wanted to give you a look of where we're at with our operating reserves. So at fiscal year nineteen, our current estimated ending reserves are approximately three-point-eight million dollars. At the end of fiscal year nineteen, we expect to have our capital outlay reserve of four-hundred-and-forty-thousand, which is set aside for the capital outlay plan. Then approved use of reserves, and I rounded here, this is the two-twenty-six eight oh five, just rounded to two-twenty-seven. And then less our eight and a half percent minimum of ending reserves for fiscal year two thousand twenty would be one point, almost one-point-nine. So our estimated ending reserves available for allocation are approximately one-point-three million. We're gonna go into some other personnel considerations that we may want to add to the budget right now, or discuss. So the first one is, we currently are still in negotiations with our police union. At this time, we're suggesting maybe we might want to add one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to the budget for the, for that type of item. We have, you wanna go through each one?
We'd like some, a yes, no, maybe on that.
You want us to do that right now?
Yep, each, each line item.
Well, I don't think that we have any choice in my opinion.
I don't think so either.
It's...
So again, this hundred, since we are in negotiations, it could be more or less, but this is what we're suggesting at this time.
I'm not comfortable making that decision at this moment. I mean, we don't, we have no idea where this is going. But we need a placeholder. Yeah, I understand, but if it's not enough, then what? Then we have to adjust it again? Yes. Absolutely. Mm-hmm. So, are you looking for votes, or are you looking for just head nods at this point?
Well, we'd like a vote, so we can at least...
A vote on each one of these?
Yes.
So we have yes, maybe, or no columns, so we could always come back to something. If you're not comfortable making a full decision.
Okay.
Well, I have confidence in our, our budget people that they, they had to base this on something, so I think as a placeholder, I'm okay with it. It's, I mean, it's not final. We can make adjustments, but I think...
We're giving you an indication of where we're...
As their best guess at this point in time.
I would say yes. So...
Okay, we're okay.
We're okay, so we can just...
Yep, we're okay with that one.
That's good enough, okay.
Um, the fire pension went down this year, and we also had included in your packet, or in the agenda item, showing several years' worth of different light items. And the fire pension can fluctuate from year to year quite drastically. With some of the changes that were just made, we're trying to ask if we could include a hundred thousand dollars in the budget this year that would be carried over to following two thousand twenty-one. But this will help smooth that pension spike that we might expect to see in fiscal year twenty-one, as well as if the state insurance money comes in less than projected, the city has to make up that amount. And that happened last fiscal year and fiscal year eighteen, which caused us to have to find other funds to cover that. So, we are suggesting to put a hundred thousand or some number in to help with that, those items.
We realize that the actuarial study showed a hundred-and-seven-thousand-dollar reduction that you previously okayed.
Mm-hmm.
From a fiscal management standpoint, we're not comfortable with, with just that. We'd like to smooth it out to mitigate what might happen in the future, and it also helps our unfunded actuarial liability. That's our thought process.
Makes sense to me.
It makes sense. From a fiscal, yeah. That makes sense. Are you getting enough head nods here?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense? Okay.
All right.
Our human resource manager, who is also our public risk manager, has come back to us and is indicating that for the health insurance, we will possibly see a twelve percent increase, rather than the six percent that we've had in our, perform in our proposed budget. So at this time, we're asking if we could actually add that into our budget. He doesn't usually find that information out until June sometime, but it would help us to plan if we could.
For planning purposes. And do we feel that we're, the pool that we're in is the, still the best possible arrangement for us?
We're small. I don't see how we could go it alone. The pool helps mitigate when you have, when you don't have good years. You've not had a good year. In the past few years, we've had good years. So, and we've taken advantage of those good years. So the pool helps minimize those increases when you have a not-so-good year. And we feel we need to put those dollars in the budget, because it's coming.
Okay. I mean, if you, that's what you're foreseeing, it's fun? Head nods?
Yep.
Okay.
During the long-range plan, it was suggested possibly adding, instead of a three percent merit, having a four percent merit for general employees, which would add an additional one percent on the general employee side. And you see what that cost would be to the general fund and citywide.
The reason we are recommending this is that when we did the Cody study a couple years ago, and when we implemented it last year, with the general employees, we did not budget and bring them up to as, exactly as to what the Cody study recommended. We did some tweaking for, for specific employees who've been here since fiscal year two thousand and nine through the whole downturn. And when we presented the long-range financial plan, we told you that we were gonna recommend, instead of a three percent merit that we've been holding to for a number of years now, a couple of years, that we wanted to go to a four percent merit. When we did the fire union contract, we did bring them up to much closer to what the Cody study had. When we're looking at the police union negotiations, we're gonna bring them up to much closer to what the Cody study had. We didn't do that with the general employees. And I think in, in our recommendation is, we need to bring the general employees closer to what the Cody study had, and we feel that one percent is at least getting started on doing that.
I agree. I think any business anywhere in this country will tell you that the value of employees to the business is unmeasurable, and we have some of the best employees. I, I think this is long overdue. I'm all in favor.
I concur.
Concur? Okay.
The next couple are things we've had in the past. We haven't brought it forward in quite a few years, but if we were trying to offset something, these are a couple options. Reduction of city-paid dependent health coverage from fifty percent to forty-five percent. Those would affect the employees that have dependent coverage, as well as reduction from city-paid dependent dental from fifty percent to forty-five percent.
We've shown these in the past. We've continually kept it at fifty percent. It's competitive with the surrounding area. If you are looking at some reductions to try and mitigate some of these other increases we talked about, this is what a five percent impact would be.
What's your pleasure? I think we have to consider it.
Are we taking away the rate, the increase we just gave them?
If, if they have dependent healthcare, yes. You would be taking it away.
So, you know, where are we competitive-wise? Understand, it's one thing to, to provide something to the actual employee, but to provide for the dependents of the employee. I've never had a job where, where any dependents were covered. It was always, it was... It was always at our expense. I mean, when I first started, yeah, but it eventually got taken away, so I, any dependent coverage... And never dental. Right. I never had dental coverage.
My gosh, I'm lucky.
Phil, which for me, Charlie...
I was gonna say, I've had a different...
I've always had it.
I've had a different experience.
I've always had it.
I had it at first, but then it got...
My children, my wife and children are usually covered.
Yeah, me too.
Our surrounding counterparts, so to speak, are all at least fifty percent. Our sheriff's office pays a hundred percent of dependent coverage. So that's health and dental. Everyone else in the surrounding area with whom we compete for employees is, is at least fifty percent. The county does it a little different way in the sense that they have a clinic, but they're fully self-funded. They, and so that you can play with those figures to show a savings, but in reality, you're not. It's just, the money has to come from somewhere. But the fifty percent is not a, is not at all unusual. In my private sector experience, I paid nineteen dollars a month for dependent coverage. So, you know, for a family right now, depending on the plan you have, you're looking at around three hundred a month, so, for dependent coverage. That helps any?
It's kind of a, for me, it's on a maybe, but I think, you know, if we're trying to get the employees up, and if, if that's one thing that, maybe we can hold on to this for now, but keep it as something that, if we need to look at it, but...
Sure, I have, I have one maybe.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to say maybe, because I, I mean, while it's something really nice to give them as a benefit, that is one of the things, I mean, we are gonna have to seriously take a look at how all these increases are gonna affect the millage rate. That's what the bottom line really is to me. I mean, I understand we have to do these line by line, but...
I would say one other thing that I think Phil would maybe agree, as far as recruiting and everything like that, sometimes, especially when you're in the government sector and having a little bit less of a salary, it's a little bit of a draw to help have that, and especially with other government sectors in the area having the same type of plans, the fifty percent, if you have a little bit less, it might...
We need to be competitive.
Yeah.
And it's a tight job market right now, too.
I mean, the people that we're hiring, we're, I mean, we're sitting here and we're retired or semi-retired for the, most of us, not all of us, but most of us. And, but we grew up and we raised our families, and, and at least in my case, I've received this type of benefit that is part of a competitive salary. We know that we're a little bit lower than most people around us, and we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot, I don't think, and make ourselves less competitive. This is a type of thing that, it builds more morale than it does, I think, it costs, and I think that we should maintain it.
And for maintaining it.
So I'm seeing three for sure, or maintain it?
Yeah.
Then I guess it's, it's maintain it, but it's, it's...
Well, they mean...
We'll just see where we go with this.
Yeah.
We'll put it in a maybe column for now.
Okay.
It's not a yes, and it's almost a no, but we'll put it in a maybe.
Oh, I don't know if it's, it's really...
I think it's almost a yes.
Yeah, I think three to two is yes.
Yeah, I think it's more almost a yes, but I think it's, we just need to...
No, no, yes, meaning you, you're willing to reduce it?
No, meaning no.
Oh, no, no, we don't want to reduce it.
No, 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 no.
I said...
Okay, I got you.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Gotcha, gotcha.
Oh, take the negative.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Okay, I got you.
Gotcha.
Okay, I know where we're going with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on. These are service level, we're going into service level enhancements. They are recommended by the city manager, but again, we'll take each one individually, and all the department heads and division, are here to talk about anything that you may have questions on. So the first one is an engineering tech position. For the general fund, it would be a point-five FTE net increase. They are proposing to share the building's part-time line and grade position. Building Department has been having a hard time filling that position that was approved previously. And then for the engineering side, in the general fund, this position had previously been eliminated in fiscal year two thousand fourteen. Since two thousand and fourteen, commercial construction permits has steadily increased, which require more inspections due to NPDs requirements. And it will allow duties absorbed by the project managers previously from the other elimination to be redistributed, allowing more time at job sites. The net effect for the general fund is thirty-four thousand ninety dollars.
So the engineering tech would be in Public Works?
It would, Public Works and Building.
Between Public Works and Building?
Both. They would work part-time in both. Our city engineer can talk more about it, but we just can't get anybody part-time over in building to do this job.
Mark, caring Public Works. We will actually be housing the person full-time in engineering. We'll take that responsibility back, which we, we transferred to the building department several years ago. That inspector will work entirely within engineering.
But now the building department is an enterprise fund, so that's, is the building department going to then pay?
Half of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Half of the position, yes.
Okay.
You have to be very careful when you use building fees, that they have to directly relate to a building-related service.
Yes.
I mean, it's very strict.
Okay. This makes sense to me. And I know how much work we're piling on to Mark. So this'll help you out, right, Mark? What about the rest of you?
I'm fine.
Okay.
All right.
This one, you'll remember from last year, was the EMS training chief in the fire department to coordinate fire EMS training with a focus on high-risk job functions such as ALS, medication administrations, technical rescue skills, and assu, and assuring compliance. We put the first year's cost in there, as, so between the ongoing costs and the one-time costs, in fiscal year two thousand twenty, the impact would be a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-three-hundred, but ongoing just for the position would be a hundred-and-six-thousand-seven-hundred.
There is a memo here attached to it. Our fire chief can speak more about it. You heard about it last year.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't quite make it, for reasons that we now know, the master plan and then the seawall replacement, both is back in front of you again.
So, again, we spoke about it last year. This was a position that we had in two thousand eight. It was eliminated with the economic downturn. Since then, call volumes have increased by almost fifty percent. In addition to that, the acuity of the call, really, we've, we've gone to the advanced life support, so when you think about patients that now come home just maybe the day of surgery or the day after, so the acuity of call that we see is much different than it was since two thousand eight. So again, with the addition of advanced life support, again, these folks are carrying twenty-three separate medications, doing, you know, work in the field that was only done in the hospital previously, so I need direct oversight with that, and this will help. So, that's where we are.
Chief, can you, can you define one-time costs? What would be included in that number?
Actually, Kristen's probably better suited.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
The one-time cost was adding the position, they would need one additional vehicle for that person, as well as the uniforms, the radio, the computer. So, those types of items are what's included in that one-time cost.
Okay.
The biggest portion's the vehicle at this point.
Clearly not salary, or I'm gonna apply for that position.
Yeah. Well, and you, you so aptly described the difference in the environment that we're in today.
Right.
And what you, you know, with our advanced life support and all of it that we do, that we didn't do...
That's correct.
Many years ago.
Right. And so, again, what I'm, what I need is that more direct oversight. When we talk about training, we talk about supplies, medications that expire, technical skills that are involved with it. And right now, it's, we have some FTOs that are, are paid, shift FTOs that, that help out with some of that, but we end up running essentially kind of three separate departments, if that makes sense, with three separate shifts. We need, we need somebody to bring all that together.
Will this person be a fire medic so that they can be on scene if need...
One hundred.
By the way, thank you to you guys for being first on scene at the structured fire this week.
Yeah, that was a big deal.
You saved, you saved a lot of people's houses.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, what's your pleasure here? I think we put it in for right now, and, you know... Can't see where it goes. Hope we don't have to remove it again this year, but, yeah, that's my, my... I'm in agreement with that.
Yes.
I think, um...
Okay, the next, we're gonna go on to the police department and their needs. And currently, they are requesting a dispatcher, a one-full-time FTE. This is a phase two, so I think it was about two years ago, they did increase one dispatcher, and they're asking for an additional one due to increased call volume, service handling. They will relieve the supervisor to manage reporting and quality assurance reviews. And they don't really have any one-time costs, so that's sixty-two thousand. And would you like to hear about all their needs first, or go through each one?
Why don't we go through each one?
Okay.
Police chief is here. When we, by the way, to remind everybody out there in the audience, when you see a number of sixty-two thousand, that is not somebody's salary.
That's fully loaded.
That, that, that's fully loaded. That includes all of the benefits, operating costs associated with that position.
Good afternoon. Pam Davis, Pontegoro Police Chief. So the dispatcher, you guys saw this morning, we had a proclamation, all the hours and the amount of things that they handle. We have the nine dispatchers and the one supervisor, but over, since I've been here, that supervisor sat on the console more than they've been a supervisor, and that concerns me a lot, because we're not really doing those quality assurance checks that we need to be doing as much of, as well as just in general, you need a supervisor in there. So, we're asking to, to have another dispatcher added, so that we can really have the amount of staffing in there that we need to handle, particularly if you're getting all those calls at once, we can have three people working in there at one time.
I definitely support this one.
Yes. Me too.
Yep.
Good timing to have the proclamation today.
I would have, I would have supported it anyway. I mean, I've, I've seen Audrey having to relinquish her job as supervisor, just to... And it is a stressful job. Yes, it is. I mean, it's, you have to be on at all times.
The next position is the employment, employee, employee development coordinator, sorry, well, tongue time, yeah. So it's a one FTE, and it would reclassify a sworn position to a civilian position, which would free up a sworn position for the community engagement program, which we'll go over in just a moment. Again, this one would not have any one-time costs. It would be eighty-one thousand dollars.
Why don't you show the next one, because they kind of tie together.
So then, for the community engagement officer program, when Chief brought it to you last year, she was requesting two engagement officers. So then, for the community engagement officer, um, program, when Chief brought it to you last year, she was requesting two engagement officers. So by switching the sworn personnel to a civilian position, that would free up the one sworn officer, plus adding one additional sworn officer would be able to, um, start that program. Again, it would allow proactive policing to focus on city hotspots, engage more with communities, special enforcement activities. And again, um, the annual costs are approximately seventy-eight thousand three fifty, and the one-time costs are fifty-seven thousand. So that's where we get the one thirty-five. Um, the one-time costs, again, include the vehicle, uniforms, radio, um, the the phone, um, computer, all those types of items. Handguns.
And and I did talk to you about this last year and various times throughout the year. Community engagement unit, think about the homeless at Gilchrist, think about the traffic enforcement that we get cau- get called on upon all the time. Hey, we have a lot of problems with speeding, um, another prostitution over on Cooper Street. Different things that are going on that our officers could go out and they, they're on patrol, they'll they'll go out and then do what they can to enforce whatever's going on, but there's no long-term solutions. They, we can't really focus, we don't have the staff to focus somebody to handle that, to come up with the solutions, or to do a full investigation on it. Our CIS, yes, they're investigators, but they're investigating all the the different, you know, cases that are out there with our felony cases and things. So we're struggling in that area. So in order to kind of do a little bit of a call-saving, I know, because I'm coming back and asking for it again, and we found that if we could civilianize our s- our employee development coordinator, which is our trainer, they do the recruitment, they do, um, they help with our promotions, and basically just keep track of everything that's going on with, that we have to for FDLE. Um, we think that could be civilianized. It'll help us also have that person focused strictly on training as opposed to pulling them to do different things as well. So that's what I'm, we're looking at as far as that that's concerned, and Councilman Wine, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, sure, I have a question. So by by going this route, this enables you to be more proactive than reactive in various, because we're already a safe city, but you're, it allows you to be proactive to maintain that.
We don't want to become unsafe in any area, so being proactive and in hitting those things that might be just popping up a little bit and and ending it helps us be proactive and keep us from any.
So would it be, would it be more economical to go this way, or to build a moat around Punta Gorda so there's only a toll bridge to get in?
If I could get you all to help us build a moat, that'd be great. This, I I, we think this is gonna be a great program if we can get it up and running.
I absolutely agree, obviously.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we add these officers, are we gonna have a dedicated marine officer at that time?
Yes, because, and, uh.
We're getting a lot of heat.
That's actually a good point that you brought up. Um, what happened over the last year, we actually were fully staffed on paper. We were great. We had, our new officers were in training, you guys remember me bringing them in. And what happened, four regular full-time officers went out on either long-term disability, one was pregnant, and then one, um, had a light duty assignment. So imagine our staff of thirty-seven and pulling four of them off, and one of them was a school resource officer, two of them were school resource officers. So we are obligated to fulfill the contract for the school resource officers, which is six in the schools. That's where our marine, you had, I had no cushion to pull any staff from to fill those places where we absolutely, which is patrol and the schools. So that's where the marine officer, unfortunately, that it it, we had to reallocate at that point.
So we will have a forty-hour-a-week police officer?
Yes, he's already out there. He's back out on the, on the, on the water. And, um, hopefully, we won't have these long-term things again, but if it happens, at least having the community engagement unit, that's where we're gonna pull from.
Chief Davis, I just want to thank you for the light reading material.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right.
I have, I have seen justifications for a job, but my goodness gracious.
I wanted you to have something to do.
Thanks, I needed that.
In our spare time, I just put it under my pillow. Um, is the, is it typical that the education, uh, position would be a non-sworn?
It it is, you can, different agencies will make them civilianized. As a matter of fact, when I came from Baltimore, I was actually a civilian in Baltimore.
Okay.
So as their professional development training person, I, it was a civilian position.
Okay, okay. Okay, so what's your pleasure here?
Yes.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes, okay. It's a, it's a thumbs up. Good, good sales job.
I wouldn't, don't sit down yet.
Body cameras.
No, body cameras. I don't, do we need to discuss that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you, if you don't, I mean, we're recommending now that we, now is the time where we're comfortable going with body cameras because of the cost, and we're also gonna be applying for a grant, so we are recommending moving forward.
And this is certainly a national best practice. Um, we already have in-car cameras. Sometimes we have a lot of issues with them, and then we can't get, produce the video, we think, go on the body cameras. That is technologically sound is the way to go.
I think it's gonna, it can also help the the officers.
Transparency, it'll help the officers, their case enhancements, professionalism, hopefully reduce complaints. So it's, it's definitely something.
I agree, no-brainer. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And just to, um, let you know how we're gonna do this one is we're gonna put it back into the capital outlay program, so that way it'll, again, smooth the funding to be forty thousand per year versus the fifty-five, thirty-three. So it, again, it'll be smoothed. Um, the next one is the urban design plotter, and, um, it was requested through IT. However, also utilities was requesting one, and they're the two divisions that actually use plotters. So we suggested that it was, um, each one should just pay for their own, because if we put it in through IT, the general fund's portion is almost seventy-three percent, it's about seventy-two and a half percent. So, um, it was actually more economical for the plotter to be purchased je- by the general fund, and the utilities one to be purchased by the utilities fund.
So they're buying their own.
Yes. IT will still service it.
Got.
But it's not something like those, those two plotters are just for those two divisions, so it makes sense that they just stay that way. It's not like every division has a plotter.
How often are they used?
A lot.
A lot?
I think I don't get attached to that.
So outsourcing it would not be a good thing, okay?
They, they're the ones who make all these beautiful maps, um, for planning and zoning needs. Um, they do signage that goes up in our parks, um, GIS, citizen requests sometimes come through them.
Okay.
A lot.
Yeah, it's used a lot. What's the condition of the current one?
The current one, as it states right now.
Your name?
Julie Ryan, for the record. Um, it's working. What happens with these types of equipment is you can buy a warranty, and, but sooner or later, the warranty becomes ineffective because that model's out of place.
Right.
Um, but to service one of these would be almost as much as replacing it. Um, so right now, the current one that we have does work, but it is out of warranty. So if something was to happen to it, um, it would be, you know, cost prohibitive for us to actually fix it.
Having come from the technology field, I know once things are not being supported, it's really gets expensive. I'm in favor of that.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
Gary? Debbie? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, we did put a, a slide in here about the citywide master plan. Again, we have no idea what's gonna come out of the citywide master plan, but we just thought, just to keep it in the forefront of our minds, um, that that is still on the horizon, but it's not currently in the budget. Um, we have a service level change recommended by the city manager. So for the service level change, um, it it's kind of like you would do both possibly. It's the elimination of the community branding of Aqua. It's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars that's currently in the budget. It was eighty-one thousand for Aqua and thirty thousand for the options of, um, various items. And then, um, taking it in-house by adding a communications budget, so you'd have in-house marketing and a communications program.
So, uh, our communications manager is here. Um, we're asking you to, um, if we, if we take the second bullet, we're not saying the service is necessarily gonna get reduced. It's just a change in how we're doing the program.
Right, um, we have absolutely no issue with the service, or at least I have no issue with the services that we've been receiving from Aqua. Under their contract, we would be able to do a significantly, uh, larger amount of marketing of the community. I was asked to prepare a secondary budget that would establish a budget for the department that allows us to do some of the things that are recommended by Aqua. It continues our brand, our branding program, our marketing of the community, but it also allows us to do some things locally. Um, one of the gaps we noticed this last year, we really wanted to do some printing so that we could market the, um, citywide master plan. We had no dollars budgeted in our communications budget that would allow us to do that. Um, some of those things were overlooked, and I have included those types of things. Advertising in, um, local publications makes a lot of sense to partner with someone else. We weren't, we haven't been doing that over the past few years, and this, the, this budget would allow us to do that.
So in a nutshell, you can, uh, eliminate a hundred and eleven thousand dollars from a proposed budget and add back sixty-one thousand.
I am so in favor of this. I know Melissa has no issues with them, but I have, I have a folder full of issues with them, starting with the fact that since November seventh, we've been asking for numbers. We have yet to receive the first deliverable, I believe that's what the gentleman called it. We've not seen anything. Melissa told me the other day that she hasn't seen anything. You know, let's don't even consider the fact that they're not, uh, advertising us honestly. They're showing us with blue water and couples walking on sandy beaches, when I've not seen that anywhere in Gilchrist Park. I think that Melissa could do at least as good, if not better, job. I know she'd be a lot more responsive.
Uh, having been, uh, a part of the, the one, the original One Community One message team that recommended that we have some kind of a program, and then we did commit to a three-year program. There's one side of me that says, but it's a three-year program, but on the other hand, um, I think times change, and it, and we are able, now that we have the communications manager position that we so much wanted and recommended, um, we're able to use Melissa's expertise to be able to then more truly customize, uh, an ongoing program, and I think it's, um, uh, much more personalized. It makes sense.
I agree, and we, we've hired Aqua to rebrand the city. They've done that. We now have a very, very, very capable person in that position locally that can pick up the ball and run with it, and and market the city the way we can control it. And we'll have hands-on, day-to-day feedback from her that we know is tangible.
And if we need Aqua for a task, we can do that.
Yeah, I I would say yes to both of these items.
I can be fine with, um, Melissa, but I do think we need to maintain a relationship with Aqua. I say this because they are doing the county, and I think it's very important that that we don't lose an active relationship with them. I think that, like, for Melissa to be able to do her job the best is gonna still require some relationship of some kind with Aqua.
Well.
I know, I would agree with that.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing yeses, but.
You know, I'm, I'm not gonna give a no, don't worry about that, okay? You know, as you go through life, you live and you learn in hindsight, et cetera. Uh, and and I've mentioned this to, uh, to Howard. If if I had to do it over again, I wouldn't even done the branding thing until we'd finished the citywide planning issue. But we, we did, we did the, and it made sense at the time. We have different talent in place, so we can build on what we've got, but I do agree with Jahah that we should maintain some formal relationship, particularly when we do get the citywide plan done, and that becomes more holistically. We may want to be able to use them as that, a little bit of expertise to to give, to give you that extra oomph, because you've got other responsibilities also, too. So, uh, I'm a yes. Okay.
Okay. All right. So we're saying yes to eliminating the contract?
Yes, yes, to both.
Yes, okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Moving on, we have our service level reductions. Um, none of these are recommended by the city manager, because staffing and operations, um, are already lean due to previous year's reductions and efficiencies. And again, based on our community expectations to retain current level of services. So, um, we'll go through the, the first three. Our service level reductions for the drainage, one is the drainage program.
We better do these one at a time.
Yeah.
You got somebody bouncing over.
We talked about reducing it from five hundred to three fifty. Here is the, um, you know, changing it even further, so you could go from zero to three hundred and fifty thousand on this particular program.
Uh, Mr. Wine?
Uh, thank you. I think, uh, reducing a hundred and fifty thousand is going in the right direction, but it's nowhere, they're close enough. I mean, we used to have a, a manishco program, I don't remember, it was fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year. It was decided that it was difficult, uh, for whatever reasons, because of construction and a number of other iss- issues. We were having flooding, that would becoming a nuisance for a number of our, our residents in, uh, in Punta Gorda, particularly in the, uh, the aisles, and I believe the BSI, BSI areas because of construction, et cetera.
Seminole Lakes, or not Seminole Lakes, but, um, Front Shore Meadows and.
Exactly, you know.
Quite a few areas.
Yes.
Quite a few areas, yeah. And it wasn't, it wasn't just, you know, but but with that said, was is it was difficult, uh, uh, I'm responsible for maintaining my swell, soil. I also have a little bit of a concern about the way we measure it. I understand we take the TV camera and if there's water left after seventy-two hours, uh, but sometimes I think that maybe that should be, uh, repeated, that it needs to show that this happened two or three times. Because it is possible that the camera came around right after somebody watered their lawn, and there may have been a little bit of puddle left. I don't think that that's the normal case, but I do think that that may have happened, at least on my block one time. Because my block didn't have any experience that I've been aware of since two thousand of any drainage issues, and they all drained through my soil that I've been ma- maintaining. And also, I think there's an inequity, because, for example, uh, I know of, uh, one of my neighbors who put in a new sod, and it wasn't graded properly, and the contractor had to pull the sod up, regrade the soil, and put it down. Where somebody whose soil is already not graded properly, uh, if they wait long enough, the city will do it for them, uh, at a charge to the city as a whole, the city constituents as a whole. I find this more of a, um, an enforcement issue than than something that the city should be taking on itself. If we do it and backcharge, I don't have a problem with that, but, uh, I'm not sure that that's doable. But I do not think that this is, and particularly in light of, and this, and I've made this point before. We are running what is considered a less-than-optimum reserve. Uh, we have been since two thousand eight. We do increase it up a little bit each year, but this is two thousand nineteen now. This is eleven years later. And we don't have that reserve up to normal. There's a number of reasons of, uh, with that. And as we pointed out today, and I commend our staff over and over and over again, we run so lean. I commend Howard's leadership, I commend all of your efforts. We run so lean that we don't, if we have another financial downturn, not only do we not have enough reserve, but we don't have personnel to cut. Because they're already cut, and they've been cut since two thousand and eight. So we don't have any buffer there either. So we are even more vulnerable, in my mind, than we were in two thousand and eight. And then that's gonna require some very painful decisions on, uh, console at the time, if 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 and when that downturn ever does occur, which it probably will, because it's a normal cycle of events. We should be prepared for it, and we're not prepared now. And this is one area where I think that we can, uh, uh, save considerable strides, and I haven't changed my position. I think it's been clear, and I hope it's still clear. Okay. So I'm a no.
Nancy?
Uh, Debbie?
When I looked at this list that Howard gave us, I had to ask myself, okay, what's best for the city, for the whole city? Is it better that we have the correct amount of police dispatchers and firemen in place? Or is it good that we're eliminating water from the front of people's yards who just aren't doing it? And I'm sorry, but I'm with Councilmember Wine. I think for the amount that this, that we're gonna be spending on this, we could almost fully fund the service level enhancements.
I have to say, uh, having been the recipient of all the emails from residents who were having problems with their drainage, I get what you're saying, Gary. As a master gardener, people, we should, you know, we know what the problem is, at least in some areas. Thatch is the problem, uh, but educating people on on that and getting people. Thatch is the problem. Uh, but educating people on, on that and getting people to take action is, they're a whole different subject. And so it's gonna require a whole different level of enforcement. And, I mean, it's a hu- that's a whole different program than, than what we're talking about. And we have not done that, uh, to, to get into a proactive. And we have, I know that we have dealt, Mark, Mark has dealt with, we have dealt with, um, complaint after complaint after complaint with drainage. And, um, so when it comes to drainage, um, you know, it's, it's either we pay here, or we come up with a drainage assessment.
I agree.
And, and, but we need to, but I think we need to do something. Um, and I think Mark, what Mark is doing is recommending a reduction, and maybe it can be reduced. Maybe there's a way to come up with an educational program. But I don't think we can cut it with nothing, 'cause it's, I think it's only gonna cause problems, and we're just gonna go back to where we were. I love the fact that, that IT is coming up with a way that we're going to be able to do this. What the video is gonna be more, something enhanced, that you, when you're recording these, it's gonna be different, um, in the future. That I think in one of the city reports.
Yes, we're, we're taking the drainage videos, which used to be on, uh, a standalone computer system, and putting them in our GIS. Where internally in the program, we'll show all of our drainage pipes. When there's, uh, roadwork for sewers or anything like that, it'll all be together in the GIS system. No change to the cameras or anything. It's software that we already own, but